Okay, we'll get going with this then right now. All right, all right, all right. Good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the Milford, Connecticut zoning board of appeals, special December 17th meeting and hearing for 17 Maddox Avenue. Let me again read this information that I should read to you. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the city of Milford website. During this meeting, if members of the zoning board of appeals like to speak, please utilize the unmute feature via Zoom and wait to be recognized. All participants will be muted during the meeting unless recognized by the chair. After being recognized to speak, please state your name. And for members of the public, your address prior to making a statement. It will start like we always do with the pledges of allegiance. I don't know if you have a flag anywhere, we'll just say.
It's right here. Where's the share screen thing? Here we go.
My allegiance to the flag. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, we'll have roll call, Meg, please.
Okay, Ms. Ferrante.
Here.
Ms. Falcone.
Yeah.
Mr. Tizola.
Yeah.
Mr. Casey.
Here.
Mr. DuBois.
Here.
And Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
Mr. Wolf hasn't arrived yet.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. So the commissioners for this meeting for this this hearing will be Ms. Ferrante, Ms. Falcone, Mr. Casey, and Mr. Hirsch, will you please fill in for Mr. Wolf unless he shows up?
Okay.
Okay, so we're all set with that. Okay, Sarah, if you would read in the.
Okay, item number one, 17 Maddox Avenue, MVP 27 slash 451 slash 11 R5 Max S. Case Esquire for Robert McLeod and Edoxya Picarazzi appellants. Property owner is AR Housing LLC. Appeal the decision of the zoning enforcement official zoning permit dated September 23rd, 2020, signed on September 23rd, 2020 regarding construction of a new two-family, two-story dwelling at 17 Maddox Avenue with zoning permit attached to application dated 10/6/2020.
Hey, Mr. Case, Attorney Case, I believe you're up.
Max, shut the unmute yourself.
Okay. There you go. Good evening.
Technology, technology. Mr. Chairman, good evening. I am Attorney Max Case. My office is located at 185 Plains Road here in Milford. I'm here on behalf of the appellants. Mr. Chairman and members of the of the board, first, I'd like to very much thank you all for the courtesy that you've extended us in holding this hearing tonight. We very much appreciate it. Secondly, I would just like to inquire of Mr. Harris. Have you turned on the recording?
Yes, I have. It's going.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Before I make my presentation with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd first like the the board to hear from my client, Dr. McLeod. And when he is finished, I will give you my presentation, if that's all right with the with the chair.
That would be fine, but you know, I'd like to just mention something that at our last hearing, and I realize you couldn't summarize things in the in 10 minutes. You know, because you did your presentation for about 50 minutes. And you actually, your client told Mr. McLeod was the one who asked for the summary, the 10-minute summary. And I had even seen it in a local newspaper, so I just wanted to record that. That was not my suggestion. It was your client suggested that, sir.
Yes, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. So again, with with the chair's permission.
Absolutely. Mr. McLeod, go ahead.
And I will mute myself.
Okay.
So would it be okay for me to just project the PowerPoint to talk to?
You're up, Mr. McLeod, whatever you would like to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, again, I'd like to. I'd like to just echo what what Max said, that we really appreciate you hearing us because what I wanted, oh, I'm not sharing my screen yet, sorry. Can I get you? Is it okay if I share my screen, sir?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Can you see that now?
We can.
Okay, excellent. So I'd like to thank you very much for for letting us come before you because as a really tight little neighborhood, which we all love our neighborhood, we feel that we have been disenfranchised by two of the three boards in Milford. And the zoning board of appeals is the one board that has been willing to even let us talk. And so I want to thank you for that. And my purpose here is just to show you what happens when the people are silenced. And you know, we know we're just little people, but we do feel that we have a right to participate in the government of Milford. So that's why we're here. Just, we want to participate in the government, and we greatly appreciate the fact that you're allowing us to come. And so I want I want to talk, just divide it this into two parts. The Wetlands Commission disenfranchisement and the Planning and Zoning Commission disenfranchisement. So this, as you, as you know, these are the two houses that are in effect now. And just for your information, the, if you look on the left where the demolition sign is in front of the sort of, well, it was at one point a very historic cottage. Sort of was in great disrepair. But the the Title Wetlands actually goes up to the front door of that house. As as you probably know, that the Title Wetlands followed the path of the Title River that came out of Long Island Sound and about 100 years ago ran through here. And that's river is what turned into wetlands. And then the house on the right is the Maddox Avenue House. And the reason I'm showing that is it also was a small house. Between these two houses, there's only 1,800 square feet of living spaces. They're very tiny houses, as you can see. And the grass in front of this house, under the current proposal, will be turned into concrete. So it's going to be just exacerbating the flooding problem. This is the application for a permit to the Wetlands Commission for regulated activity. And I'd just like to call your attention down here to where the names and addresses of all adjoining property owners are. I'm going to enlarge that now from the same document. Whoops, didn't come up, sorry. There it is. Okay, so you'll see there that there's Ev's name, there's my name, and there's James Foley and Caroline Foley's name. They are not able to be here. The Foleys moved to Tennessee for reasons, I guess, economic reasons during the during the COVID-19. So their house has been vacant during all of this, which is the reason they they're not participating. And then you can also see that we're all abutted by Silver Sands State Park. And if you just go back here, there's a map of the land. And at the at the very top here, where you can see my red drawing, little red line there, from that red line back to the front of this house is Title Wetlands. And the Scott Street extension runs at the top of this map. That is also classified as Title Wetlands. Now, we were, you can see that the developers had all of our addresses and were supposed to let us know about the inland wetlands hearing. We never heard about that hearing. We never got a chance to go and talk to the commission. And as as you know, it's to the developer's benefit if he can can demonstrate that this is inland wetland, not title wetland, because title wetlands would require him to have a stronger stronger controls on it. So what he did, and this is again, something that happens when they when they disenfranchises, they went down to Norwalk and got this gentleman, I'm sure he's a very bright gentleman, Otto Thiel, who calls himself a professional soil scientist, but he does not have a terminal degree. He's not a coastal biologist. He actually went to the Yale School of Forestry Management. Now, as we know, inland wetlands are in the forest. So there are many excellent coastal biologists practicing in Milford. I've already located two of them who are willing to come, willing to come and testify. I've asked Mary Rose if we can submit information. She hasn't been able to to make that determination and get back to me yet. But I have found two outstanding coastal biologists who help move these definitions and would be willing to come and talk if we're allowed to have them come and talk. So one of the, one of the the points here that we could have brought up is that Mr. Thiel, Thiel, being an inland wetland specialist, was talking about Aquinas. So I thought, well, that's interesting. What's an Aquinian? Well, so I looked it up in the dictionary, which is here. I gave you the link down here at the bottom. And of course, I'll give this to Meg, so you can all have.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt for a minute?
Absolutely.
Go ahead. This is all very interesting, perhaps in a different context, but the zoning board of appeals has no authority over title or inland wetlands. This project has already moved through that board. So I don't, I don't, I don't think this is germane to the actual item on the agenda.
Thank you for your thoughts, sir. I'll explain why it is germane. It's germane because the neighborhood was cut out. We were disenfranchised and we were never able to say anything because we were not even given the courtesy of knowing that the hearing took place. And that to me, I mean, that's undemocratic and it's wrong. We're the neighbors. You're not some outside developer coming in. We're the neighbors. We live here.
Can I can I just intervene for just one second? Mr. Harris, whenever the wetlands goes out and checks out a piece of property, is it always me? There's, there's no public hearings on those. Am I correct?
I'm not completely familiar with how the inland wetlands commission works. But however they work, any wetlands concerns that might be valid, but they're not the purview of the zoning board of appeals.
Well, usually in most of our hearings, we get, you know, this was signed up by the police commission by the inland wetlands, but we, you know, we don't, we don't see any other, anything that has to do with their actions. So, so, Mr. McLeod, you know, maybe if you want to briefly sum this up on what your thoughts might be on this, other than that, other than that, it might not be, you know, pertinent to what we're doing.
Okay, sir, I just want to point out that we live in a flood zone. I had 11 feet of water in my house at the last hurricane. And I think this is, I think the environment is something that's of concern to all of us. And that when you, when you eliminate the people of Milford in favor of a developer who only wants to come in and make profit, that harms Milford. That harms the Milford wetlands and the Milford environment. So that's why I think it's relevant. So anyway, I just wanted to point out here that Aquinian kind of wet soil formed on the riverbanks. I just showed you where the riverbank was. Title mudflats, not inland wetlands, tidal mudflats. Okay, I also want to point out that the title wetlands definition, I won't read this through you, but a tidal wetland can border or lie beneath tidal waters, or it can be on waters where there's been a separation built between the tide and where the where the tidal wetland actually is. And of course, that separation happens to be right where my house is that was built. So it's still defined by the act. I gave you a copy here of the act from the Connecticut State Legislature defining what a tidal wetland is. This picture is not from Connecticut. It's from New York, but it it's it's the same verbiage as from Connecticut. And it shows you a photo of a tidal wetland, which, I mean, we all know Silver Sands State Park. That might as well be Silver Sands, which is where we live. So by by disenfranchising the neighborhood, harm, permanent harm is done to Milford, to our wetlands. So let's move on to the planning and zoning commission. Okay, so when when Mr. Mon first bought the property, I said, oh, this is interesting. I'll find out what's happening. So I went down to the planning office down at Town Hall. This was pre-COVID. And I met up with a very nice gentleman by the name Taft. And he explained to me that, he explained to me, the rules are very firm on that property, Dr. McLeod. He said that if you tear down the two existing small houses that are there, Taft knew the property. And he said, if you tear them down, then you are allowed to rebuild on the foundation only. He said, that's the absolute rule of of Milford. And that, of course, was borne out by Mr. Harris later. So just to be sure of that, then, you know, I talked to Mike Tarantino, who who sold the property. And I just to say here, just have this note from Mike. Mike's going to try to be here, you know, because because of the hearing being postponed, a lot of our people who are going to be here aren't able to. But I'll just read this. When Mr. Anon considered purchasing this property, I made it clear to him that the portion of the land bordering Scott Street was classified as wetlands, that I could not sell this portion of land to him, and he could not buy it. I told him that according to Milford's zoning regulations, you'd only be permitted to build new structures on the existing footprints of the former houses. Mr. Anon was apprised of this before he ever bought it. Because after Mr. Tarantino told him that, because he's the last statement down here, he actually made a mistake when he looked or we made, we made a $20,000 mistake. But he he checked with his attorney and found that Mr. Anon then negotiated the price down by $27,000 based on the fact that the wetlands were there and he had these building restrictions on the house. So he goes in there knowing what the Milford rules are. Then I meet with him. He says, no problem, no problem. I just want, my wife loves living at the beach. I want to build a nice little house for for my wife and my family to live with. No, I said, that's great, you know, welcome to the neighborhood. We have our nice little houses in the neighborhood. Next thing I notice, this rolls in, is, I don't know what that's called. Some big piece of construction equipment rolls in. And this is now the land that Mr. Anon purchased is to your left. As you look at this, it rolls in and starts digging up the tidal wetland in Silver Sands State Park. So I go flying out there and say to.
Chairman, I have to interrupt again.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
This, yeah, this is off topic. This is not the, not the topic of the appeal. Your, your, this board has no jurisdiction over wetlands. You have no jurisdiction over the, over the planning and zoning board.
But this is showing that the planning and zoning board did not get accurate information. That's what I'm showing, Mr. Harris, if you can bear with me, sir.
Chairman, I would, I would argue this is the wrong venue to argue against what the inland wetlands board might have done or what the planning and zoning board might have done.
All right, Mr. McLeod. This board had a variance brought to us twice on this piece of property. And you did make this presentation, you know, so most of us are really aware of the stuff that you're offering right now. So so briefly, if you want to touch on these things, but I.
Okay.
You know, you can't be going on and on because I'm sure there's a lot of people behind you that want to talk. I know Attorney Case has has a longer presentation, so we don't want to.
I'll go as quickly as I can, sir. It's just. We've been disenfranchised and these, and I think it's important that you know the history of this property. So, I mean, you can see they're digging out. So I go running out and I say to the guy, what's going on? He says, I'll talk really fast. He says, oh, Mr. Anon told us to dig up this side. He's going to widen the road. I said, you can't dig in Silver Sands State Park. And he says, oh, sure I can. I said, look, would you mind just calling and making sure, call Town Hall? I guess he called Mary Rose. I don't know who he called. But anyway, they found out that I was right. Stop digging. Okay, then they go start developing, start clearing the place. And Mary Rose had told them that they had to clear out the garbage. They never did. They never did. I wrote to Mary Rose. This is her letter. It's in the record. I won't, I won't read the whole thing in the interest of time. But basically, Mary Rose came out to the site and said, you guys have got to clean up your garbage. You can't do this. You can't put garbage on tidal wetlands. So Mary Rose, in her, in her job as inland wetlands compliance officer, then had to force them to not snub their nose at Milford again. Okay, so Mary Rose goes away, and then what do the guys start doing? They back up and park their trucks on the inland wetlands. Again, I go out, I confront them, they move them off for a couple of days. What happens just two days ago, they move them back on. I mean, my car wasn't in the driveway. They must have thought I wasn't there. They move them back on in defiance of Mary Rose's order to them. Not only that.
Did you say in the last two days? You said that, right?
Sorry?
And you just said in the last two days they came back with their.
Two days ago, two days ago, yes.
Okay, okay.
Then, in addition to that, then they find out that the Foleys are in Tennessee. So what do they start doing? Parking their stuff over at the Foleys. Like, they have no idea of private property. Okay, this is a result of their trampling down our our inland wetlands. Here's another result. They're pumping their overflow water. Now, again, they know the Foleys are in Tennessee. Guess where the overflow is getting pumped to? The Foley's property, of course. They're not there to see it, right? Then they testify that there's no wildlife being displaced. I don't know if you can see this, but there's deer here, there's ducks. You can see a mother deer and her doe over here. You can see a whole family of ducks here. This is after they testify they're not displacing any wildlife. In addition to that, the bulldozer driver who cleared this told Mr. Tarantino, who lives across the street from me, says, wow, I had no idea there were so many raccoons and other wildlife on this land. Said, I actually had to run over some of them. Like, well, there aren't that many wild lives left there now because these guys ran over and killed them. So here they are again. Here's a whole duck family you can see living there. Okay, this is construction overflow still being pumped. Now, this is just, just within 10 days ago. I've got the exact day here. Still, still pumping. They are, have no concern for the rules of Milford. Now, this happens to be my yard.
Well, who happens to be this contractor? I mean, can't you, have you been in touch with the contractor?
I go to the contractor and he says, oh, no, Mr. Anon told us to do this.
Where are they from? Where are they from?
West Haven, City Point Construction in West Haven. And that's just when I go to him, I say, you can't dig up the tidal marsh. He said, Mr. Anon told us, he owns that marsh and we work for him.
Mr. Chairman, I have to interrupt again.
Sure. All right, Mr. McLeod.
All of this is is interesting and it would be, and it's vital in a different context. But it's non-germane to the appeal of the of the zoning, of the issuance of the zoning permit. That is the only thing that's that this board has to concern itself with.
I think, Mr. Harris, you'll see the next couple of slides are very germane. Okay, so this actually is is your administrative summary, Mr. Harris, where you say that they have to, in order to have any variance, they have to be, they have to prove hardship and a whole bunch of other problems. This is, of course, you were later told to rescind your email. You were overruled.
Right, Mr. McLeod. But I don't know, I don't know Attorney Case is going to make the same presentation that you're doing.
Mike, please not, that's why I'm not dwelling on that. But then, then, when the, when it came up to planning and zoning on August 18th, I wrote. Were you there that night, Mr. Harris? On August 18th, at that hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so you remember this, then. I wrote, did you see, did you see my letter, sir?
Well.
Mr. Well, okay.
This is, I made a whole bunch. Mr. McLeod, you know, I, you're asking Mr. Harris questions directly, so.
Is that, am I not allowed to do that?
Oh, well.
All right, I want to ask. It's okay.
But we'd like you, we'd like you to sum up your presentation.
Okay, okay, thank you, Paul.
Because I'm sure, I'm sure everything you have in front of us right now is going to be presented by your attorney.
No, it's not. He's, I'm just presenting what happens when you disenfranchise people and don't listen to the citizens of Milford. So I listed seven different, different items. We were not allowed to speak at the at the zoning. A lot of people were there. Ev was there. A lot of people from our, from our neighborhood were there. We were not allowed to speak and they did not, we had all written to them saying, please, we want to bring this stuff up. They did not allow us to bring it up. Then Mr. Fisch says, it'll be a slippery slope if we keep allowing public, we asked for a public hearing. That very night, they granted a public hearing to a development on Broad Street, and they didn't grant us one. I might point out that last week Attorney for State said, we didn't get ours because we weren't as important as the other one. Well, I'm glad to know I'm not very important. I'm just some little guy. Doesn't matter. And the whole rest of my neighborhood doesn't matter. Okay, so I'll just, I'll give the, I just, I won't read these in the interest of time. But some people who who didn't, weren't able to come tonight, wrote to me. Here's Richard Malone. He's age 88, doesn't use a computer. He asked me to bring this in. I am in favor of the appeal as presented by Attorney Max Case. You can read this. It'll be in the record. This is Frank Smith, our newly stated, our newly elected representative, who was on the inland wetlands commission, not when this was heard, but previously. Please record my support of the application for Robert McLeod and Edoxya Picarazzi, appealing the issues of the permit. So our own state representative is coming out in favor of us. And these are three other, four other residents of 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 Scott Street who are opposing, opposing this and in favor of our appeal. So, in fact, if you'll notice tonight with the other speakers and the other letters that have been submitted to me, every single house on Scott Street is opposed to this. Every single house. And on on Maddox Avenue, which is a much longer street, every single house that surrounds the development is also opposed. Ev can speak to that more. So this is the last thing I have to say. I hope you'll help us preserve our neighborhood. It's happening in our neighborhood today, and the same thing could happen to you tomorrow. And just to note, just to show you the kind of neighborhood we have, this is the kind of place where people even go out and decorate the town signs for Christmas. You can see Maddox Avenue up there. So this is just our, our little neighborhood where we thank you for listening to us because you're the only board that will listen to us as citizens and did not disenfranchise us. So thank you. I very much appreciate your patience.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry we had to interrupt you a few times, but so, so, so it was, all right, so. All right, Attorney Case, are you speaking next then? And then people.
Yes, I am.
Okay, absolutely, of course.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your patience. I think it was important for the board to hear the concerns of the neighborhood and why, why they're here again tonight. As Dr. McLeod has said, we've been before you three times. This is the fourth time, and this is the only board that has acted to help these folks preserve their neighborhood. So having said that, and I apologize, folks. You're, some, some of what you're going to hear tonight is what you heard before. And I have to do this because, as I said 10 days ago, we need to have a record. So I hope you will indulge me. So I hope you will indulge me, um, and I will, I will move through, um, as quickly as I can. And at the end, I will, I will, uh, be happy to answer any questions that anyone has. And, um, before I do that, I, I just want to ask, um, for the record, um, I would like to have, um, Dr. McLeod's, uh, presentation made part of the record tonight. Um, so having said that, this is an appeal under, uh, section 9.2.1 of the Milford zoning regulations. That section recites that this board has the authority to hear and decide an appeal where there's an alleged error in any order, requirement, or decision by a zoning enforcement officer of the city of Milford. And we will stipulate that that includes the chief zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Griffith. We submit that the zoning permit qualifies as an order, uh, requirement or decision. And we submit that the appeal was filed, our appeal was filed on October 6th, 2020, which was within the 15-day appeal period requirement. And we submit that this appeal was made on form available from the Planning and Zoning Office. Now, we submit, uh, that the zoning permit, um, was made and issued in error. And therefore, um, if you uphold this appeal, that zoning permit will be revoked. And I submit to you that you have the authority to do that. So for background purposes, um, as I, as I mentioned last time, um, there were two previous applications that were submitted to you regarding 17 Maddox Avenue and 20 Scott Street by Attorney Crusaden for Ish Anan. Um, on May 12th, 2020, I appeared before you to oppose that application. You continued that public hearing to June 8th, 2020, at which time you denied the application without prejudice. And I'm, I will ask again that the official minutes of the public hearings from May 12th and June 9th, 2020 be included in the record. A second application was filed for another variance to you. Uh, and a public hearing was held again on July 14th, 2020. And once again, I appeared to oppose that application and that application was also denied by you. And I asked again that the official minutes of that public hearing held on July 14th, 2020 be included in the public record this evening. Now, because this is an appeal, you have the authority to conduct a de novo hearing to determine if that zoning permit was properly issued. That means that you can consider and you can evaluate the evidence that's being presented to you. And this must be your own independent judgment and your independent interpretation of the evidence. And you should not and cannot simply rely upon the zoning enforcement officer or even the chief zoning enforcement officer's interpretation. The interpretations should be yours. And the authority for that is the case of Kozerta versus Zoning Board of Appeals, which happened to have been a Milford case. Uh, a 1993 case, uh, 226 Connecticut 90. So in making your evaluation and coming to your judgment, you should keep in mind, um, guidance from the Connecticut Supreme Court. And that is that the Milford zoning ordinances should be construed. The words employed are to be interpreted according to their usual and natural meanings. And the regulation should never be extended beyond their express terms. Common sense should be used in construing these regulations. And that came from another Supreme Court case, Monroe versus Zoning Board of Appeals, that I'll talk about again in a couple of minutes. You should also keep in mind what Article, Article 6, which governs non-conforming uses and structures, and that that entire article should be read as a cohesive whole. It should be read narrowly and it should be applied consistently because the community has an expressed interest in not extending the life of a non-conformity. The goal should always be that the non-conformity will gradually be eliminated. Now, both of these applications that, that I just mentioned and that, that the hearings were held on were credit, were, were predicated upon an email from Mr. Griffith to Stephen Harris dated April 22nd, 2020. And that email, uh, was referred to by Attorney Crusaden in the public, in one of the public hearings as the basis for the determination that the only variance that was required was a variance for a side yard. Now, I'm gonna ask, um, Dr. McLeod if he could share his, his screen with me and if he could put up the that email that I just referred to. And then I'm going to ask him if he could also put up, uh, a series of emails, um, between Mr. Harris, um, Mr. Griffith, and Attorney Crusaden.
Um, Mr. Chairman, is that, may I share?
Yes, go ahead.
So. Okay, Bob, you have, all right. So I'm not sure if you folks can see, but, um, on, on the top is the email, um, that has Attorney Crusaden's name on it. Um, and that is the email that, that references from Joseph Griffin to Mr. Harris. Um, and references, um, that he says, I had discussed this with Kevin and with you on numerous occasions, determined that this proposes to enlarge the structure. Accordingly, the variance is to allow the structure, structure to be construed according, encroaching into the setbacks. The existing non-conforming use is not being changed. It will remain as two dwellings. Adding more living space is enlarging the structure, not increasing the number of dwellings. Please rescind the email below. So that's what people were shown. And you have to ask yourself, how did Mr. Griffith become involved in this? So if you look at this email chain, um, there are seven emails in it. And it starts off with an email from Mr. Crusaden and it's to Mr. Harris. And he tells Mr. Harris that he's attaching his variance application. Um, and he gives him, um, what he thinks is, is needed. And then the second email in the chain is from Mr. Harris. I'm sorry, from, yes, from Mr. Harris. And he says, thank you. I, I got your, your ledger size and that's okay. Now here's the one that no one saw. And this is the important one. And Mr. Harris writes back to, to Attorney Crusaden and he says to him, I went over the floor plans. Um, and then he reminds him, this is a nine, these are non-conforming, two fam, two family and separate buildings. He talks about the living space. He talks about the proposed living space in the two units that are shown, that it's a substantial increase. He talks about the fact that there's only one variant shown. And then he says, look, section 6.2.1 applies to this. And that prohibits, and Mr. Harris recites the, the language from the, from the ordinance. And basically says, you, you need to change your application. And you need to add section six point, you need to ask for a variance for 6.2.1. Straightforward. And that's exactly what, what Dr. McLeod was saying, that when he went into the Planning and Zoning Off, Office, that's exactly what he was told. So that's two times he was told the same thing. So now we get an email from, the next email in the chain is from Attorney Crusaden. And Attorney Crusaden, um, says, no, no, that, that's not right. I discussed this with DPLU and I disagree with your position. Per my email with the application, DPLU confirmed an additional variance is not necessary. Well, my recollection is that Mr. Harris is a part of DPLU. And if you look at the ordinance that I submitted to you, you will see that the Department of Land Use also contains, uh, the planning and zoning part. And that includes Mr. Harris. So Mr. Harris apparently was unaware of any of this. Cause it was never mentioned to him. And now we get the next email, which is the email from Mr. Griffith. Where he says, no, no, Miss, no, Stephen, um, I had discussed this with Kevin and with you on numerous occasions. Well, if he discussed it with Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris had apparently determined in his own mind that that was not, that was not the case. Because Mr. Harris very clearly says to Attorney Crusaden, you need a variance here. And if, if you don't have the variance, then your application's incomplete. Now, Mr. Harris, Mr. Griffith then goes on to say, please rescind and please review OP number two. Well, OP number two, for those of you that don't know, is, um, an office policy from the Department of Planning and Land Use, which says that when there's a disagreement, there's supposed to be an articulation. Supposed to be shown, you know, somewhere in the file. This is why I disagree with you. I submit to you that that's not in the file. That's not there. So if there was an understanding, it was an understanding that was reached apparently between Mr. Attorney Crusaden and Mr. Griffith without the benefit of anyone telling Mr. Harris. So it's our contention that Mr. Harris, when he was reading this application, was correct. There was, uh, an issue of a nine, of non-conforming, a non-conforming use. Um, and that issue needed to be addressed. Now, I submit, and, and we've included in our exhibits. Um, and Dr. McLeod showed them before. He showed you the pictures of 17 Maddox Avenue. He showed you the map. We have also included, um, in our exhibits, um, the assessors cards to substantiate what was on the property. Um, houses were, the zoning regulations, as we know, um, it were enacted in 1930. Um, we know that 17 Maddox Avenue is in an R5 zone. And we also know that in an R5 zone, one fam, one single family, um, residence is permitted. And we submit to you that there were two single-family homes at 17 Maddox Avenue. And it constituted a non-conforming use. They were there before zoning. And that was Mr. Harris's point. So why did Mr. Harris take this position? Why did he say 6.2.1 applied? Well, you can ask him that. But we believe that it was based upon his understanding of Article 6. Mr. Harris has been our zoning enforcement officer for some time. He knows what a non-conforming use is. Um, and he knows what the definition is in section 6.1.1 of the regulations. And he knows that section 6.1.4, which is certificate of zoning compliance, stipulates that no non-conforming use can be constructed, reconstructed, enlarged, extended, altered, moved, changed, maintained, restored unless there's a certificate of zoning compliance. Now, um, Article, section E, point E of the Milford zoning regulations still calls for certificates of zoning compliance. Um, I heard some discussion the last time that, oh, we don't use certificates of zoning compliance. Well, they're still in our zoning regulations. And if, if the Planning and Zoning Board doesn't want to use them anymore, then there's a process by which section, section 8.8 can be removed. If Mr. Griffith feels that section 8.8 is no longer germane, he can make the recommendation that it be removed. But it's still a regulation and the regulations are supposed to be followed. And the very clear meaning of section 6.1.4 is you need a certificate of zoning compliance. And I submit to you that Mr. Harris understood that. And he understood that the variance that was being requested, I made in May continued to June and then again in July, shouldn't have been there without another variance under section 6.2.1 unless there was a certificate of zoning compliance that was gonna be issued. And that didn't happen. So some of you might be wondering, well, okay, you, you've shown me this string of seven emails, you know, how, how come you didn't know about this? You know, where, where, where did all this come from? Um, well, there's a, there's a reason that we didn't know about it. Cause it wasn't, it wasn't part of the April 22nd email from Mr. Griffith to Mr. Harris. It was cut off. We only got one section. Um, and so part of the materials that we submitted, I told you that the only way I could get that chain of emails was to file a Freedom of Information request with the Department of Planning and Land Use. And I did that on October 19th, 2020. And I filed that because despite requests, I was unable to obtain a copy of this, of this email chain. And again, if you look at Mr. Griffith's email to Mr. Harris, he says, please rescind your, your email below. What email below? If you look at the email that it's up, that's on your screen, it's not there. So the logical thing that someone should ask is, what is it?
Chairman Tzola.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I've just gotten a text from Ms. Valakat. She's lost Wi-Fi connection. So I think you have to, perhaps as, Mr. Dubois.
Mr. Dubois.
Thank you.
Mr. Dubois, are you, you're still here with us, right? Correct? I can't see you, but.
I'm still here, yes. Yep, I'm here.
You'll be in with, for, uh, Ms. Valakat.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I wasn't able to review what Mr. Har, Mr. Harris's email, even though there was a reference to it in Mr. Griffith's email. Um, you know, I, I, I wondered what it meant, please rescind this email, the email below, but the only way I could find out what that said was to get, get it through the Freedom of Information. Not only that, but, um, despite the Freedom of Information request, uh, there was no other information in the DPLU file to substantiate whatever conversations took place between Mr. Crusaden and it, and Mr. Griffith uh, or Mr. Gri, Mr. Crusaden and Mr. Harris. Even though, as I said before, the OP 2 seems to require that those conversations be reduced to writing. So we submit to you that the Coastal Site Plan approval rendered by the Planning and Zoning Board at its August 2020 meeting was reached in error because the Planning and Zoning Commission was not aware of the issues regarding expansion of this non-conforming use. It was unaware of the series of the emails dated April 22nd, 2020, between Mr. Crusaden, Mr. Harris, and Mr. Griffith. And it was unaware of the non-compliance with Article Six. And because the approval of that coastal site plan was premised upon that fatal flaw, it's subject to the appeal that my clients filed with the Planning and Zoning Board that was alluded to by Mr. McLeod. So I would submit to you that, as I said, only the Planning and Zoning Board has the authority to change its regulations. It can be done at their direction. It has to have a public hearing. It has to have an affirmative vote. And these zoning regulations are made pursuant to the policing power of the state. And once they're enacted, they must be adhered to. I would submit to you that 6.1.4 is still the requirement regarding non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. Its requirements must be adhered to. There's no provision in our current zoning regulations that permit that step to be eliminated. And that's not what happened here. So I also, as part of our submissions, we've given you the job descriptions for the director and for the zoning enforcement officer. We even gave you the regulations that guide the Department of Planning and Land Use. Nowhere in any of those documents does it provide for this zoning enforcement officer or the director as to give them any express authority to override, circumvent, or supersede a zoning regulations. In point of fact, the zoning enforcement officer and the director are required to enforce the regulations. And that's what Mr. Harris was trying to do when he wrote to Attorney Crusaden on April 22nd, 2020, before he was ordered to rescind his email to Attorney Crusaden by Mr. Griffith. And we submit to you that Mr. Harris's interpretation was correct. It closely follows what's been articulated by numerous sources, including Judge Robert Fuller in his book Land Use Planning. And there Judge Fuller cited the case of Monroe versus Zoning Board of Appeals, which I previously mentioned. And he cited that as an example of an imper- impermissible extension, alteration of a non-conforming use. And in that case, the court determined that adding a second story to a garage was an impermissible alteration because it increased the non-conformity. Same thing happens in this case. Same standard applies. And let's look at, let's just look for a moment at, at what we had. If looking at the assessor's card, the one that that is part of our submission tonight for 17 Maddox Avenue, and the picture that Dr. McLeod showed you, it was a single-family house built in 1920, had a living area of 954 square feet. On, on, there's a picture of, of, of the house in the, in that card. Same picture that Dr. McLeod showed you. And then there's a picture of, of the second house that Dr. McLeod showed you. Same thing. It had one floor. Had 943 square feet. The first house had 450 square feet on its first floor, 900, 504 sque- square feet on its second floor, total of 954 square feet. Living space was 1,897 square feet. And what were you going to, what were you going to get on this non-conforming lot? Well, previously, we had two stories. Now, according to the site, Coastal Site Plan, we have a house that has three stories. Previously, the height was 26 feet. Now we have a house that's 34 feet. Previously, we had lot coverage of 30%. Now we have lot coverage of 50%. So this was a lot, a non-conforming lot when Mr. Anon purchased it and when it was conveyed to AR Housing LLC in 2020. And we submit to you that what was proposed in the Coastal Site Plan is flies in the face of everything that 6.2.1 says you're not supposed to do. You're not supposed to enlarge. You're not supposed to extend. You're not supposed to alter the construction. You're not supposed to structurally alter it. Unless you're doing something that's allowed in the zoning district. And what they propose to do is not allowed in the zoning district. They want a two-family house. This is an R5 zone. One-family house is permitted. So nothing would have permitted, prevented AR Housing from undertaking upgrades to those houses that they tore down, which they were told. As long as they didn't enlarge, extend, alter, construct, reconstruct, or structurally alter. There's no other interpretation possible from these words. And I, and that policy was the policy that Mr. Harris again was articulating. So we again have to say that the Mr. Griffith's April 2020 email disregards the very clear meaning of 6.2.1, the very meaning that Mr. Mr. Harris articulated. There's nothing in the zoning regulations that authorizes the zoning enforcement officer or the director to make a final determination on the applicability of regulations by issuing an email in place of a certificate of zoning compliance. It's just not there. And again, I submit to you, if that's what the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted, if that's what the director thought was advantageous, then the zoning regulations should have been amended to permit that, but they weren't. And so they're supposed to operate under what is presently in the zoning regulations. And I'm just briefly going to ask you to pay some attention to 6.2.2, which speaks to the movement of a non-conforming use. You can't move it. It says you can't move it to another part of the lot. I mean, that's pretty clear. It's not much, not much interpretation that you can, you can use on that one. And I, to be fair, we should also note that section 6.2 says, well, you, Mr. Property Owner, you can apply for a variance of section 6.2.1, section 6.2.2, section 6.2.3, exactly Mr. Harris's point to Attorney Crusaden. So as I say, you know, there was a possibility to, to amend the regulations. But, but that never happened. So we have to deal with what, what we have. So finally, I just want to say that we believe that Mr. Griffith's decision flies in the face of a 2010 Superior Court case. Now, this case was decided in the Milford Courthouse. It involved our neighboring town of Orange. And the case was Rogers versus Zoning Board of Appeals. And that case was decided by Judge Hiller. And he relied on the Monroe case that we've talked about this evening. And there he determined that an addition in a vertical expansion increased a non-conforming use. And it required a variance. Because, he said, you're increasing the bulk, the bulk of the building intensifies the non-conformity. It changes the amount of light and air between buildings. It is not a negligible or cosmetic change. So in conclusion, I asked two things. First of all, I ask that the Milford zoning regulations be made part of the record. I ask that what was put on the screen tonight, the comparison of the email issued by Mr. Griffith and putting it in its proper slot with the seven other emails, be made part of the record. And I humbly ask that you uphold my client's appeal. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Chairman, I know that there are people out there that, that do want to be heard and speak in favor of this.
Okay. Are you all set, attorney? You're all set?
I am, sir, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Who else is going to be speaking on this appeal? Who else is speaking in favor of the appeal?
I'll speak.
Okay. Go ahead. Identify yourself, please, in your red dress.
Hi, my name is Abdoxy Picarazzi, 15 Maddox Avenue. I'm the direct neighbor. First, I appreciate your time on this. These matters are exhausting. I'm only involved in one, and I want to put a fork in my eye. Uh, I have to say that I wouldn't even be in this position if my one question was answered that I've been asking since April. Why has a two-family home? Or why is it allowed to be built on a one-family zone? I purchased this home knowing there were two houses on the lot next door. Only just purchased this house a couple of years ago. And I knew eventually two houses were going to go up. And I can appreciate that. And I was looking forward to it. But not a two-family home in our one-family zone. That's all that I want to say. That's and also, well, I actually do want to say something, and I don't know if it's, if it's politically correct or not, but I wouldn't be in this position spending thousands of dollars on an attorney if the city that I lived in simply answered my question in April. It's all I've been looking for. And to top it off, I'm a pretty private person. I moved down to this little neighborhood, nice and quiet, and I got, my phone blew up yesterday because my name was in the Connecticut Post for a zoning something they were telling me. And I was like, what are you all talking about? I finally found the article this morning. And I don't even appreciate that my name is in the paper. So please, I am begging you all to vote for this appeal. This, this is going to destroy our nice little neighborhood. I don't even know what else to say. I'm very frustrated. I'm sorry. And I, and I'm not very good with my words, but that's what I'm trying to convey here. I am for the appeal. And also, Meg, I, I sent you an email to confirm that you received the two letters that I submitted for nine Maddox and 11 Maddox. And I didn't get a response. I'm sorry. I don't know if it got in on time. I did it yesterday. I, that's.
I, I did receive them.
I, if you can just put those in the, whatever, I don't.
They're in the record.
Thank you. The legalities and the terms and all that. I just wanted answers to why is there a two-family home being built here? That's all. That's all I'm looking for. Please vote for this appeal. Thank you.
Okay. Who else is speaking in favor of the appeal?
We just, this is Stephen Tommy Yenner at Four Scott Street, and we just want to say we support the appeal as well.
Okay. Your name again, please.
Stephen and Tom Massa Yenner.
And your address again, please.
Four Scott Street, Milford, Connecticut.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Cheryl Lynch, I think you had.
Hi, I have only been part of the Maddox neighborhood for about two years. I've been impressed by the closeness of the neighborhood feeling there. I'm really against the building of a two-family house at 17 Maddox. I'm very concerned that there is, if this is able to be built, that there will be another two-family house built next to me at 16 Maddox, which is currently a demolition site. I do not look forward to the possibility of rental units, transient people, and a huge dwelling of 4,000 square feet. The street is already quiet. Parking is, is at a premium. My vote is strongly no against the building of the structure. If there's any chance of this becoming a two, two, one-family dwelling, I strongly oppose that too. Thank you for giving me the chance to share my feelings.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else speaking?
I'd like to speak. I'd like to speak in favor of the appeal.
Go ahead, Muriel, go ahead.
Um, so I'm Muriel Young. I live at 16 Scott Street. I'm not gonna say much. I just wanted to comment on the topic of the emails. The, the email chain, sort of like the way that the first email that Attorney Case was given access to was not complete. So I work at a small law firm in New York City called Clerica and Ricebaum. And just usually when parties exchange materials, whether it's formal evidence or not, emails are always complete. You know, we don't really, that's just not something that's that just doesn't, that's not like, that's not proper form to sort of to provide emails that are not complete. And I just wanted to comment on that point. But I, I'm strongly in favor of the appeal. So that's my main point.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like.
Yes, hi. I'd like to.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Mark.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Hi. So my name is Mark Ammon. My wife and I, we live at 10 Maddox. And we just wanted to simply state that we are here to support our neighbor's appeal.
Thank you, sir. Who else, please?
Hi, my name is Grace Biggs. I live on 11 Maddox. And I'm here also to support the appeal. As a physician, I'm a little surprised by, I guess, the way that this is all turned out and that someone can build and get special privilege when it's, it's not in the zoning laws. So I have two small children and it is a very nice, small, dead-end street. And I'm not sure if this is for commercial, you know, reasons to rent out, but would really like to keep it a nice, small neighborhood where children feel safe and where there's not a huge building that's sort of out of consistency with the neighborhood that stands now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking?
Hi, I'm Anne Cranes from Four Scott Street, and I support of the appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Martha Lersky.
Okay.
I live in New York and I work for, I'm an assistant professor at Lehman College in the Bronx. And my research is about climate change and involves mostly about stakeholder involvement and, and culture. I'm concerned, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of the appeal, and I'm just concerned about this lack of stakeholder involvement that seems to be taking place. And I just want to call attention to that in terms of what happens with the environment. It doesn't look good for the environment when stakeholders' voices are not included. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking? Anyone else speaking in favor of the appeal? Okay. All right. So rebuttals, who was here this evening for a rebuttal? On the concerns of this. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Mr. Harris, go ahead.
I'd like to go first, if I may.
Sure, absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Harris, Milford Zoning Enforcement Officer. And speaking on behalf of the department tonight. First, I want to say that the, the only issue is the issuance of the zoning permit. Was it lawfully issued? The Planning and Zoning Board heard a site plan. They approved the site plan. I have a ministerial duty to issue that zoning permit. Whether I want to or not is immaterial. Whether I like it or not is immaterial. If it's an approved site plan, then I have to issue the zoning permit. That's number one. Second is the, the issue of the nonconformity. This, uh, this is a legal, non-conforming two-family use and it may continue under law unless the owner affirmatively abandons that use. And the owner did not abandon that use. They presented a plan to continue the use. Three concerning the emails. Us in the department, me, the director and the city planner frequently discuss regulations and what they mean and how they should be interpreted. We have a lot of that internal discussion back and forth. The final say is by the director. So the emails constituted internal discussions I should not have forwarded to Attorney Crusiden. Which is why the director asked me to rescind that email and I did. So again, the, those emails just reflect internal discussion, not the final decision was, which rests with the director. Three as to the expansion. The department's position is it's not an expansion of a non-conforming use. So just to sum up the department's position, it's a legal nonconformity that may continue because it's not abandoned. The issuance of the zoning permit was a ministerial duty on my part. The emails were internal discussion only, not the final decision. And I would like to ask Attorney Case if he could include the regulations that he cited from the Town of Orange into the record. So having said that, I will gladly answer any questions that I can.
Attorney Case? You know what Mr. Harris is asking for?
I, I think Mr. Harris is asking for a copy of the, of the case, not the regulations. Is that true, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
The case. So you want a copy of the case?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, we can submit that. I will, I'll forward that to your office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. Any other rebuttals?
Mr. Tizola, may I speak? It's Kevin Crusaden.
Yes, yes. Hold, hold on for one second, Mr. Crusaden. Mr. McLeod, what are you asking, please?
I was asking if we're allowed to ask questions to Mr. Harris. He said it was only rebuttal.
Well, yeah, before we move on to the next person, yes, he, he just said, aren't there any questions? So go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, you said that, that this was not an expansion. Is eighteen, going from 1,800 square foot to almost 4,800 square feet? Is that not considered expansion?
No, the city of Milford does not consider that an expansion.
Could you explain to me that mathematically? That's, that seems that's a 250% expansion to me mathematically. But is math not relevant here?
I just would refer to the answer I just gave. The city of Milford does not consider this project to be an expansion of a nonconforming use.
So math, so math doesn't count? And, and it increasingly the coverage from 34% to over 65%, is that not an expansion?
The city of Milford does not consider this project to be an expansion of a nonconforming use.
Can you explain how that math works? Can you just explain that to me? I don't understand that. I, I don't understand the math.
I've been asked the same question. I've asked and answered the same question.
Okay, so math, math doesn't count.
I can explain, I can explain it when you're ready.
Wait, could I ask my other question, please? If you can explain the math, Attorney Crusaden, if you can explain the math, that's great. I don't understand it. And how many times has Mr. Griffith ordered you to rescind an email where you expressed an opinion?
Mr. Chairman, that question is out of order.
Okay. All right, I believe it is also. Okay. Any, any other questions, Mr. McLeod?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Crusaden?
Mr. Chairman, before you go to Attorney Crusaden, could I just ask Mr. Harris a question just as a follow-up?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harris, you, you indicated that the department does not consider the, these, this is an expansion. And despite the math, is there any authority that the department has to substantiate that position?
The final interpretation of the regulations rests with the director. And the city's position, I'll just, it's the same answer. We have internal discussions about regulations and the director makes the final interpretation. And the, the city does not, and the department does not consider this to be an expansion of a nonconforming use.
Hey, sir, just as a follow-up to that, when you, when you had this discussion with, with Mr. Griffith, did he cite any authority to you?
Well, Mr. Chairman, that, that would just be work product. Like I said earlier, we frequently, me, the director and the city planner frequently bounce questions off each other.
Well, I, I'm just assuming that when the director, the director would have the last say. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, that's true.
So just, just as one further follow-up, Mr. Chairman, we did make a, a freedom of information request and we did ask for all documents to, to support this. And we did not receive any independent document that would substantiate the basis for this decision to override Mr. Harris. And in point of fact, Mr. Harris must have had a fairly strong concern because he was the one who brought it to everyone's attention that he felt that 6.2.1 applied. So I suppose I should ask the question, Mr. Harris, today, do you still believe that 6.2.1 applies to this situation?
No, I don't.
Okay. And did, did someone give you some independent information to make you change your mind?
Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin Crusaden.
Again, Mr. Chairman.
Hold, hold on, Mr. Crusaden, let's. Mr. Harris, you want to answer these questions or?
I mean, it's.
I mean, you had stated also, I mean, I, you, there was a lot of inter-office conversations, I'm sure. I think, you know, we, we looked into some emails this time and they dug into it a little bit deeper, but I guess he's asking for a confirmation now on, on your final decision once you've had talks and I, I guess you wouldn't have one on that because it was kind of something that might have been agreed upon in the zoning office.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, we, we frequently discuss what, discuss the interpretation of various regulations. And at some point, a final decision is reached.
Thank you.
Not an expansion of a nonconforming use.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead. Who's your question directly to that, please?
So, Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, would you be able to give us an example of what an expansion would be? Because I think many of us are, are having difficulty with the math here. What would be considered appropriate expansion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to get into a hypothetical back and forth.
But that's not a hypothetical. Is there something in the past, an example of what an expansion would be?
Again, Mr. Chairman, these are hypothetical questions. I'm not going to get involved in a hypothetical back and forth.
All right, Mr. Crusaden?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can start with the last question first, if that works. For the record, Kevin Crusaden, 3 Lafayette Street. I'm representing the property owner and permit holder. 3 Lafayette Street here in Milford. To answer that last question first, an example of an expansion in this case would be going from two units to three units. That would be, that would be an example of an expansion. And then to kind of walk backwards through some of the last comments with, you know, Dr. McLeod asking about how the math doesn't add up. And that's because that's not the, that, that question's not properly framed. It's not a mathematical question, it's a use question. So, and that, and that, that kind of tails off of the answer I just gave about what would be an example of a, of an expansion of a nonconforming use, how the Milford Planning and Zoning Board interprets it and how the Director of Permitting and Land Use interprets it. So, like, for example, you could have, there's no maximum square footage, single-family house in this zone. It just has to do with lot coverage. So, and, and this example, the, the structure that's being built meets the lot coverage requirements for a single-family house. So whether this was a one-family or a two-family house, it could be the exact same size. So it's, it's not, respectfully, it's not about the increase in square footage and there's actually a, another regulation under Section 6 that says any, you know, non-conforming nonconformity other than use cannot be expanded and that's in the memo that's, that's posted, the memo that I, I wrote a month or two ago that's posted as part of the agenda. So, so the question has to be framed properly and so, and, and that last question actually answered Dr. McLeod's question. It's not about the square footage. So the, and I'll kind of go back to Attorney Case's comments, the beginning of his presentation. I'll try to be as brief as possible. But the question about the certificate of zoning compliance may still remain in the zoning regulations as a requirement. However, a few years ago, the city attorney's office decided that that the Milford Planning and Zoning Office would no longer issue certificates of zoning compliance. You used to be able to walk in and say, and pay whatever it was, 35 or $75. And if your property was compliant, they would write you up a certificate of zoning compliance. For whatever reasons, whatever reasons the city attorney had, whether it was a case or a statute or it just wasn't, he didn't think it was the right decision. They instructed the zoning office to stop issuing those. Now, not to go into too far detail, but you can get us, they, they will issue a certificate of zoning compliance in, in conjunction with a certificate of occupancy. So a certificate of building compliance, but that's the only, that's the only instance now that you can get those in Milford and some, some municipalities will issue those and, and some won't. So yeah, I think that, you know, that part of the regulations is probably trailing behind and I'm sure it's, you know, it could be adjusted or addressed by the Planning and Zoning Board at some time in the future. But I do want to, you know, there's this undercurrent or tone from Attorney Case that something improper or untoward was done here. The, just for the record, the city attorney agrees with the issuance of this zoning permit. The inland wetlands issued a permit. We weren't required to notify the property owners of the inland wetlands hearing. We were required to provide the names of the adjoining property owners if the inland wetlands agency decided to hold a public hearing on the application. When we went to the inland wetlands agency, because it was a house with two lots in a neighborhood, excuse me, because it was a lot with two houses on it in a neighborhood of houses and lots, this, this, this lot is sandwiched in between two houses. They decided, based on our plan and based on the city engineer's memo, that the stormwater drainage would be addressed that it did not rise to the level of a public hearing. So there was nothing incorrect or inappropriate about that and we've complied with the inland, inland wetlands permit. Now, if you, if you are building a house, if it's a single-family house in a, in this zone, coastal area management zone, you're required, you're not required to go to the Planning and Zoning Board for a coastal area management approval. But if it's more than a single-family house, which in this case it is, it's two-family, you're required to go to the Planning and Zoning Board. So this, so this structure actually got a higher level of review than a, a single-family house would. And the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed it and determined that it didn't have any negative impact on coastal area management. And, and they approved it. Now, I know that members of the public, I was there at that meeting, obviously, I know that neighbors and members of the public had asked the, the, the Planning and Zoning Board to have a public hearing on that coastal area management plan. But the Planning and Zoning Board is not required to have a public hearing on that plan if they, if they don't see fit to have it. It's entirely at their discretion. And it only recently came up because there was another application on the agenda that night. And, you know, if, I don't want to be misquoted, but it's not that these neighbors are not as important as what was going on downtown. Chairman Quish's point was that this application didn't rise to the scale and scope of the application that was downtown. That's all I heard from the meeting. I can't speak to why otherwise the Planning and Zoning Board didn't grant a public hearing, but they had no obligation to and it's entirely out their discretion. So nothing was, nothing was done incorrectly there. And then the DPLU, whatever, you know, whether you want to mean that to be Joe Griffith or the entire department, I guess it's the Department of Permitting and Land Use, if you, versus the Director of Permitting and Land Use. This is their policy. This is not inconsistent with other applications as long as you're not increasing the number of units. And one of, one of the impetus is for this change over the past, like four or five years has been a change in the statute in 2017, Connecticut General Statute 8-2 that says that further clarifies the non-abandonment of existing, pre-existing non-conforming uses. As long as the property owner did not abandon the use and express an intent never to reestablish that use. So this property compared to what was there previously or the structures that were there previously is now going to have a much better stormwater drainage system. It's fully FEMA compliant. The other structures were over 100, 100 years old. We're not building code compliant, not FEMA compliant, probably should have been knocked down a while ago. So it's meets all of the zoning regulations. You denied, this board denied two variance requests and that was your decision. So the property owner came in with a plan that didn't require any side yard setback variances, but and the reason I had said to Mr. Harris in that email, no, thank you, is because I know that that's not how the Department of Permitting and Land Use interprets these regulations. The Planning and Zoning Board could have had in, you know, if they had a question about it, that, that would have come up. So I think for all of those reasons, in addition to my memo, I just want to make sure from, there's a lot said tonight. I want to make sure I didn't miss any notes. So the expansion is the use, not the square footage. So the, the case that Attorney Case had cited, I think number one, he said it was a 2010 case. You know, laws, the case law and the statutes about nonconforming uses have changed since then. Secondly, it's a, it's a case in orange and I, I think Stephen, you know, was right to ask for the case to be in the record. That's fine. You know, but I think that the orange zoning regulations from 2010 should, or whatever year that that case was, was involved should also be part of the record because that's, you know, otherwise you're comparing apples to oranges. The, there was a lot, Stephen, you know, discussed, there was a lot of discussion about inland wetlands and tidal wetlands. And, you know, I'm sorry that the neighbors, I legitimately am, you know, sorry that the neighbors feel like they're disenfranchised, but they've had two opportunities, actually now four opportunities to come speak in front of this board. So they've had an opportunity to be heard. They filed an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Board decision with the Superior Court. So they're going to have that opportunity to be heard and Stephen is also correct. Because the Planning and Zoning Board issued, issued that approval, Steve, Stephen or Joe Griffith or whoever the responsible party was to issue a permit had no choice but to issue that permit. They had no choice. So if, the limited issue in front of you is the, the issuance of the zoning permit by all measures up and down through several different departments, city engineering department as well has met all of the requirements. So the permit should stand. There's no, I haven't heard any reason why the permit should be, I haven't heard any reason in all of this why the permit should be revoked. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Attorney Crusaden? Any questions? Attorney Case will let, we'll let you have some.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no.
Crusaden questions?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Crusaden? Are you open for? Mr. Crusade, are you open for some questions, please?
I'm open for a couple of questions, you know, as long as it doesn't turn into a attempt at a cross-examination.
It, it won't happen that way.
Sir, it's not, it's not an attempt at a cross-examination, please don't insult me. So Attorney Crusade, would you say that it's normal legal procedure to slip one piece of an email and only submit that instead of submitting the entire email chain?
In what, in what case, and because the, what, because what, what's the inference, I, I don't understand what the inference is?
The inference is that we had to go to file a Freedom of Information Act to discover that, um, Mr. Harris had been ordered to resend an email. And in your presentation, you only plucked one piece out of an entire email chain and, and submitted that. And you've heard Muriel testify tonight, who, who works for a law firm, that, that that is not the normal way to proceed in legal cases.
Well, with, with, with all due respect to you, sir, and to, uh, Muriel, what I presented to the board was relevant. Typically, the Planning and Zoning Board or the officer or the agent will print out an email and put it in the file. Um, that was not a relevant part of the thing, because, uh, as Stephen had said, that was not a relevant part of the application, because it, it had nothing to do with the variance, um, that we were going for. So it, the, the rest of the email wasn't relevant, and you can have your opinions on it, but, um, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't know what else to say about that. I, I don't know what the, you know, I know that there's an attempt at an inference to say how somehow that that was improperly done, or what, whatever, whatever the, whatever the grab is at this point in time, but, um, I don't, the,
It wasn't.
There was nothing, there was nothing, there was nothing incorrect about it, it, that's what the, that's what the Director's decision was, that's the policy of the city. Um, if I, if I didn't want to submit something because that was part of an internal decision that Stephen was, you know, uh, you know, corrected by, by Mr. Griffith, um, there's that consideration as well. But typically, those, those emails do get printed out and put in the file, so it wasn't any attempt to hide anything, I just submitted what was relevant.
Okay, are we all set?
Last, no, sir. So, so last, last week, when you said that, that when we asked the, the Planning and Zoning Commission for a hearing, we being the people of the neighborhood, that our case wasn't as important as the Broad Street case. Can you explain that to me?
I, I, I don't recall saying that. Uh, I didn't make the decision not to give you a public hearing, it was the chairman's decision. And so what I gleaned from the chairman's conversation, now that it happened several months ago, or what I can remember from that, um, and I'd already stated it earlier, um, was that this project was not the scale and scope of what was taking place downtown. So there's no, there's no slight to you or your neighborhood, Dr. McLeod.
I think we should leave it at that.
Okay. I still don't understand how math doesn't apply to, to Section six-point-two-point-one, but, I, I guess. So I'm a computer scientist and, and numbers, and numbers don't add up, it doesn't make sense, but, anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I just say one thing? With all of this going on, coastal management, FEMA, everything that's being thrown out here. This is probably one of the reasons why we should have had a public hearing, because of all the gray matters. But the fact is that they're trying to build a two-family home in a one-family zone. It's as simple as that, coastal this, FEMA that. That's the simplicity of this whole matter, so please take that into account.
Okay, thank you. All right, any Commissioners, uh, any questions for Attorney Crusade? Who, who else, who wants to speak?
I have a, ask, make a comment or ask a question on this?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Steve Yatter. Um, I thought that there was some talk early on in this presentation where we said that the appeal process is supposed to consider the entirety of the situation, and not just the decision made by one member of the commission, uh, whether he's in charge or not. So I don't completely understand how repeating that the decision was made is really relevant to the entire situation that we're reviewing.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that, it's Kevin.
Yes, please, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I, I, I. Are you, is he talking about the planning and zoning?
Well, yes, sir, sir, yeah, very briefly, Mr. Chair, and, um, and to the, and to the, uh, the gentleman who just spoke. So the, so there was, it was not just the one decision, Planning and Zoning also made that decision. Inland Wetlands also made that decision, and it's the policy of the, um, Planning and Zoning Office, that this is how these, these, these types of regulations and situations are interpreted. So it wasn't just one individual, although I, I believe that individual would have the authority anyway, even if it was just that one individual. But in this case, we, um, and the neighborhood also had the benefit of the Planning and Zoning Board, um, seeing it and, um, reviewing it, as well as the city engineer. So the city engineer also agreed with it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might, uh, just to clarify, I was the one who, who made the, the comment as part of my presentation. And, and the point of the comment was that, uh, the board is supposed to take all of the evidence that's presented to it, uh, view that independently and come to its own decision, um, as to what it wants to do. That, that was the point, uh, and, and that is the point of, of, of the appeal, that you are supposed to make the determination. You're not supposed to give deference to Mr. Harris or to Mr. Griffith, it's supposed to come, um, as a result of, of your determination. So now, unless there are any other questions, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead, go ahead, continue.
No, I, you, you wanted to say something, I interrupted you.
Well, I, I was just going to say that we're getting off on to, uh, what the Planning and Zoning Board does. Um, so we, you know, I'd like to sum things up and just get back to,
I will.
To what, what we're going to do as a board right now, and, and, um, Commissioners, let me just call your names out, who will be voting on this.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just, um, have my rebuttal, which I, I didn't get.
Go ahead, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, so I just want to raise a couple of points, um, I have to comment on them. Um, so Attorney Crusade mentioned that the, the city attorney no longer, uh, requires the, the, the department to issue certificates of, of zoning compliance. A-again, that flies in the face of what the zoning regulations call for. If, if the city attorney's office feels, and the Department of Planning and Land Use feels that that's not, uh, required anymore, then the appropriate way to do this, and I've said this once, and I'm going to say it again, is to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask them to amend the regulations, hold a public hearing on it and vote on it. And, sir, in members, until that happens, it's still a requirement in the zoning regulations. So, the, the, the comment was made that, that permits were issued, um, and, and, and yes, permits were issued by the Wetlands Commission and by the Planning and Zoning Commission. But again, it, it comes back to what we're, we're arguing about here, that none of that, neither of those commissions was aware of six-point-two-point-one. Neither of those commissions was aware of the fact that Mr. Harris had originally said that a variance was needed. I, I just have to, since Mr. Crusade mentioned it, I, I just have to comment on, uh, what happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes, there was a request for a, a public hearing, and the response from the chairman of the commission, with all due respect to him, was this is a slippery slope, we don't want to go down that, and I, you know, I, I, I think we'll just leave that for, for what it is, and, and we'll address that, you know, in court when it comes time to do it. Mr. Crusade mentioned the, the change of the, uh, statute in twenty seventeen, yes. Yes, there, there certainly was a change that said that if, if, that you weren't abandoning a non-conforming use, um, if you took the house down, but nowhere does it say that you then have the right to reconstruct and enlarge or alter, doesn't say that, it just says, if you take it down, you're not abandoning it. And I will submit the, um, the orange case. And last, um, again, with respect to Mr. Harris, I mean, he's testified that it, it's ministerial for him to approve the zoning permit. Well, um, Section eight-point-five gives zoning enforcement officers certain rights. He's got to make a determination before the zoning permits issued, that all the regulations have been met. And it gives him discretion, it says, the zoning enforcement officer shall approve or disapprove all applications within a reasonable time, and shall forthwith return two copies of the approved application to the applicant. If he disapproves, he shall, at the request of the applicant, set forth in writing the reasons for disapproval. So it wasn't ministerial, there was discretion that Mr. Harris had in signing off on a zoning permit, and that is our section. And again, if we want to change the section, uh, if we wanted to say something else, then the Planning and Zoning Commission should do that. So, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board, again, I, I thank you. Um, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I do, uh, I appreciate your indulgence this evening, and you're giving us the time.
Okay, all right, thank you, all right, so. So Commissioners, the Commissioners that will be voting on this right now, if you're prepared to, to vote on it this evening, Ms. Ferranti, Mr. Dubois, Mr. Hirsch, and Mr. Casey. I see, Mr. Wolf, that you're here, but you had missed some in the beginning, so, um, the rest of the Commissioners have been here for the entire hearing.
Agreed.
Uh, I'll ask my Commissioners right now, do you have any further questions for Mr. Crusade? Go ahead, Mr. Hirsch.
I have a question for Ms. Attorney Case.
Go ahead.
Okay, Attorney Case, do you agree with Stephen Harris's statement that it, because the zoning board approved the site plan, he must approve the lawfully issued permit?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hirsch, well, again, that's, uh, Section eight-point-five that I, I just read, he has discretion. He has to decide if the regulations have been met, and he can either approve or disapprove. And if he disapproves, he has to set forth his reasons why.
Attorney Crusadean, oh, Attorney Crusadean, what do you, i- is he, is Attorney Case correct?
About that specific question, Mr. Hirsch?
By, by my question was whether or not Steve Harris, the zoning board, uh, of the zoning board, has a ministerial duty to issue or to, to issue the permit once it's been approved?
Yeah, Mr. Case's point is not correct. Stephen Harris had, had, had no choice but to issue a permit after the Planning and Zoning Board approved those plans, because those plans, as approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, are deemed compliant with the zoning regulations.
Okay, so he, so you're saying that Stephen Harris had a ministerial duty then? In other words, a duty where there's no discretion involved to issue that permit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So one of you guys is right, one of you guys is wrong.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hirsch. All right, any other Commissioners with any questions? Any other questions before I close this hearing? Okay, none, okay, this hearing is closed. So the Commissioners that I have called out, are you prepared to decide whether to uphold the appeal or overturn the appeal? Um, your thoughts, whether you're not, whether you want to vote on it right now? I believe we still have time, if you don't want to vote on it this evening, but.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Ms. Ferranti, what do you think?
Yeah, I think we can vote, too.
Okay, Mr. Dubois, you ready? Mr. Casey?
Yes, I think we can vote.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so, um, any discussion? We've had quite a bit to absorb.
I think it's very simple, I think the Planning, the Planning and Zoning, uh, Department approved this site plan. According to that, uh, based on that site plan approved by Planning and Zoning, the permit was issued by, uh, Steve Harris, which he had a duty to do. Um, I don't see what the problem is.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, uh, Chairman, too, I agree with Mr. Hirsch. And, uh, if the, uh, Attorney Chase disagrees with, as sole as a court, the, the court can remedy this situation, but we left, like, we, um, there was really no, well, I shouldn't say that, but I think that I agree with Mr. Hirsch.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't agree, I think that if it were as simple as saying Mr. Harris had to do it, so therefore we can't question it, then why have we been here for the last two hours, why have we been here last month, why were these poor people allowed to take an appeal to begin with? If it all comes down to that, I think that there are certain zoning regulations that were used to support the permit, but others were ignored. Um, I think that a case can certainly be made that increasing the square footage does not equal an enlargement of the non-conforming use, I do agree with that, I do agree with Mr. Crusade's, statement that moving from a two-family to a three-family would constitute an enlargement, but Section six-point-two-point-one has a second half, it says, you know, no non-conforming use, no structure devoted to a non-conforming use shall be constructed or reconstructed. And I think that that's exactly what we're doing here. Um, was the two-family use abandoned, no, but that doesn't mean that the property owners don't have to adhere to that second part of six-point-two-point-one. So I do think that there was an error in the issuance of this zoning permit, and if that's not for us to decide, I don't know where it goes. So I, I can't, given all this, simply say it's approved because it had to have been issued. I, I think that there's an error here, and I, I, I want it to be.
I have a question, who made the error, if, if there was an error made?
Um, the error was in saying that that they could, that, the, the issuance of the zoning permit, that a two-family house, that these two houses could be knocked down, and a two-family house could be built in a single-family zone without requiring a variance, that was the error.
So the error was made by the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, there was no variance, there was no variance needed, so.
Yeah.
The new structure fits into the property.
But I don't believe that it does, I think a variance was needed, based on six-point-two-point-one.
What variance was this, because they already, I already have the total framing structures, so what various, what's needed, like, assuming that there's correct, that we have a two-family, we allowed to have a few two-families structured. What variance, like, so the square footage is.
A variance to allow a two-family structure.
But you can't do that.
Six-point-two-point-one, no structure debate, devoted to a non-conforming use, which two-family is, can be constructed or reconstructed, when you knock it down, you got, you know, we, we do this all, all the time with non-conforming structures, you know, you've got houses on tiny lots in that same neighborhood that are in the setback. It's a legal non-conforming structure, they knock it down, they have to come to us for variances to go back into the setback. That's the structure.
We're not talking about setbacks, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you were talking about.
I know it's not the same, but I do believe in parallel.
I just, Sarah, you make a great point. I, I, I get it.
All right, um, all right, is anyone prepared to make a, a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, motion to deny the appeal by Attorney Case and his clients.
I second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to overturn the appeal, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Casey?
With the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
I made it with the motion.
Okay, Mr. Dubois?
I'm with the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
Against the motion.
I'm with the motion. Okay, overturned, the appeal is overturned. All right. I don't believe we have anything else on this agenda for this evening, uh. Where is Meg, Meg?
Hi, Meg.
Yeah, we'll see you all in court.
No, there's nothing in terms of minutes to review, that would be in January.
And there's nothing left on this agenda, we just had this one hearing, so, okay. So, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And second, Commissioner's second, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.